All right, there's still a few more board members on the way here in Lincoln. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'll hope that there is a quorum of the board president present. It's great to see all you here today. Thanks for coming out. So this, just so you know what's going on today, this is not a regularly scheduled board meeting. A regularly scheduled board meeting on the schedules for January 21st. This is a special meeting that was specifically called to listen to the auditor's report and for the board to accept. We have to vote to accept the auditor's report because it has to be into our authorizers by tomorrow, basically. And so this is, there's no particular board business scheduled for today. Next week, I will be meeting with New Roots staff to answer questions. I'll also be meeting with New Roots parents on Thursday to answer questions. And then there's a regularly scheduled board meeting on the 21st, where we'll have another one of our community circles, where it will be a discussion for everybody who wants to, all the current community members to participate. So today, we're going to hear the auditor's report. Then, there'll be time for public comment if you wish. If you're interested in public comment, please sign up on the sheet that is over there. And then, we have an anticipated executive session to discuss personnel matter. So that's the agenda for today. So with that, we will start with turning it over to the auditors.
Okay, thank you. And this is Virgil. I'm a partner on engagement. And this is my own, Sunmi, who's the manager on engagement. And if you've met both of us before, that's the familiar persona we have here today. So we wanted to, we have several documents here. The first one is the executive summary. So this is where we kind of put over this analysis of the audit reports, some of the financial numbers. So we'll work primarily on that. So the first page just goes through the different reports that we issued. And the first is our independent audit report. We've given you an unmodified opinion of financial status. And what that means is that we believe that there's clearly stated in all material respects and terms, we generally accept that. Also, in your packet, I'm not going to ask any terms of any of them right now, but there's a communication letter. This is the same letter that you see every year, pretty much. And it talks about those bullet items that you see below. Now, this year, we had a new accounting pronouncement that was implemented. It didn't change a lot. It changed some of the terminology in the report. For instance, there's no such thing as unrestricted, restricted net assets. Now it's called net assets with and without those restrictions. And the other, the largest thing probably that affects you is that there's a new footnote. It's called the liquidity footnote. But then we'll look at that next three or four years. So that's something new. We had no difficulty performing the audit. There were some corrective statements. And there's a list of audit adjustments in this communication letter that you can look at. We also did bring attention to certain footnotes that are in there. So for instance, and also some estimates. So for instance, estimates like your allowance for disputed claims, compensated absences, depreciation. All these are estimates that are based on depreciation as useful as a fixed asset. That's how you help, you know, differentiate and depreciate them. So just wanted to bring those estimates to your attention. And then we have an emphasis on a matter to discuss about financial position. And we'll talk about that. There's also a report in the book on internal control over compliance and internal control over financial reporting. And we have one issue. Last year, we had a couple of issues. This year, we have one that has to do with the level of audit adjustments that we've had here. And we'll talk about that in the management comment letter also. And we get to get more detail on that. So any questions about the audit process, what we do, how we do it? Yes?
I'm looking at the same page you are, I believe. There is a paper that I've been calling disagreements with management. We didn't mention that. What is it?
We did, well, if we had any disagreements with management about our opinion or about, you know, having treatments, that sort of thing, then we would put that in this letter. We didn't have anything like that.
So, no.
Right.
And there's a freestanding letter that goes through all this in more detail.
Right. The communication letter talks in depth about all these items. But there weren't any issues, no disagreements with management. Management representation, which is just the fact that Tina has given us a letter that pretty much says she's given us all the information that we needed. There's no information that would affect the positions that we don't have, that kind of thing. And there were no consultations with other, that kind of the camps. That would be like second topic, like you didn't want to guard it, you'd give it to somebody else. You'd give a different one.
Okay. Are we going to discuss the, your communications with this?
We can go in more detailed in the communication letter if you like. Would you like to do that?
I'm more personal on this one.
Ahmed has a report that they can bring to you.
Well, that was going to go through the footnote, so we can certainly go through the communication letter if you want.
Maybe less that than the management.
That we will go.
No, I'd rather do the overall as efficiently as possible and then do more of that.
The details, yeah. Okay. All right, we're good. Okay, great.
Okay, so page two with the executive summary. This goes through the numbers. As Liza pointed out, this executive summary is documented. We prepare outside of the primary financial statements.
Sorry, Dan. Just one second. All the documents that we're looking at right now will be posted up on our website by January 1st. So you'll be able to see all these things.
And it's a draft right now, too. So after this meeting, we will go back and finalize if there's any questions or anything. So we'll go back and finalize when we're done here today.
Literally after this meeting.
Thank you, sorry.
So page two, this is where we start into the numbers. This is the statement of financial position. So if you look, we do a five-year comparison here, 2019 to 2015 year. If you were to look in the larger bound booklet, which will take you eventually to your primary financial statement, you should see these same numbers repeated there. We just pulled it out here for discussion purposes. And also, there's only two years that are presented in the financial statements here. Like five, so you can see trends. I'll go through this. If you have any questions, just feel free to interrupt. Halfway down the page, you ended the year, June 30th, 2019 year, with total assets of about $912,000. That's a reduction of about $32,000, 3.4% from the prior year. You can also see a reduction from the year prior to that. Looking at the individual captions, you need to note probably some more important balances. It would be the first one, your cash position of your balance. You ended the year with $143,000 in theoretically unrestricted cash. In the non-current assets, there's additional $25,000 that the board has designated for reserve. That's a couple lines down there, non-current assets. So your cash position, your combined cash position is about $170,000, which is fairly consistent with last year's balance. There's about $2,300 that was due state and federal paid by your receivable year end. It fluctuates a lot based on the timing of the expected payment. Whether the receipts after year end require to be year end. You ended the year with an accounts receivable balance of just under $300,000. Any questions?
We have talked in relatively vague terms about hundreds of thousands of dollars that various districts, particularly at the City School District owes us.
Yes.
And I wonder how you determine this particular number and how it compares with what a much larger figure that we've been talking with.
Sure. So these financial statements are prepared on a fairly conservative basis. So that accounts receivable number there, you'll notice, has net. So what that means is it's net of an allowance for disputed claims. So if we look at the gross amount or the total receivable balance at June 30th, 2019, it was actually about $730,000 that was receivable. Of that balance, I think it was around 450, I have to work on my notes to be concise, about 450 was due from the City State School District, which represents about $140,000 this year, $140,000 the year prior to that, I think $30,000 the year before that, and then some more the year prior to that.
Why are you putting that instead of gross?
So the reason that we put in that is, and there's a footnote in the financial statements that talk about that, but essentially, because those balances have aged out and there's questions as to whether or not they'll be payable, we have to net those out because from a, this is kind of, the financial statement, financial position is really to give you a picture of the financial statement as of June 30th. Where are you? So if we include those amounts in there, it would essentially overstate your assets because there's questions as to whether or not they're collectible or not. Management feels they're collectible and they're pursuing them, but just due to the historical collection rates, we have to allow those to be declined.
How do you decide? You knocked out $430,000.
Right. So how we arrive?
What are the criteria that made you say, from your standpoint, they're not collectible?
So that's, that's an excellent question. So how we, I'm not even talking about our issues, but how we really arrive at our receivable amount is, we take a look, so your end is June 30th, 2019. So we actually come up with the audit in September. So one of the things that we do is called a sub-subsearch. So we look at all the cash receipts that were received subsequent to year end. So at June 30th, you had $730,000 receivable. When we came in September, you had collected about, I think it was $130,000 of that balance. So in our minds, if they're receivable and you collected them, the school district may have payment on them, they're good receivables in our book. Additionally, in the last couple of months, since we already did the audit, there's been other receipts that have been in, I think it's around $20,000. So about $150,000 has been received. So we feel really comfortable in that amount. Aside from that, there's a really extensive aging schedule that's prepared behind this receivable number that shows all the different years that are receivable for all the different school districts and the other amounts that wound up into that number. So we actually disallowed, or through Tina, about 100 different discussions back and forth kind of about, you know, all these numbers. We decided it would be more conservative to take just the current year amounts that are receivables, so the amounts that were built to the district. But I think it was around, right about $300,000. So $150,000 that was subsequently received. And then there was discounted $70,000 in additional receipts that were receivable for the 19 year. And then there was a percentage of the intercepts, based on our conversation with Sunmi, that were also included as receivable because they felt those would be paid.
$50,000, huh?
Of the amounts for the intercepts.
Yeah.
I don't remember the exact number that was in there.
It was closer to 60,000.
I think it was, yeah, like 65,000 to 67,000 somewhere in there.
Basically, looking at the most current ones, so looking at ones that are just a couple of years old and dealing with the collectability, when we start going beyond that, that would be very difficult to collect for very old balances. And then with the LEAP students, because that is very uncertain at this point, we did not include LEAP receivables.
So you were comfortable with saying there's about $67,000 left that in your opinion is collectible?
That was a conservative estimate.
Hopefully, it will be more. But to be conservative and...
Fingers crossed, but so am I correct then in seeing this $297 plus $100,000 really mean 67 that you think is collectible?
I don't think we're riding on the same number here, but I could definitely look at our numbers.
Well, that's why I'm trying to understand it.
Yes. The $297 is conservatively what we feel would be collectible. However, if the intercepts come true, potentially could be a lot more that would be collectible.
So a lot of the receivable that you see are their current balances. About $297, most of that is current.
Right.
Kind of just kind of the older, the older receivables.
$151,000 we know was received subsequent to year end. And then the residual $140,000, roughly half of that is intercept balances. And then the other half would be current amounts that we feel based on confirmations and other procedures that were performed, schools likely received.
So not to prolong very much longer. Is it fair to say then we have columns for 2015 to 2019? And they range from a low of $220,000 to a high of $363,000 and around $297,000. You're using the same principles to, where we might have been thinking with our fingers crossed, hundreds of thousands of dollars more. You've been applying your same criteria right along and you've been saying these numbers here.
Well, it's really management's criteria they've been applying. Yes. And if you look in the financial statements, the primary document, there's more detail in there including historical balances, at least comparatively for this year and last year.
Right. Well, we got this this morning at the earliest, or at least I did, and stuff like that. Before conversing with all of the board members.
And if you do want, like, dollar for dollar, Tina's got that, she could share her analysis of this.
So just, just the rough numbers. So there's $300,000 in net receivables. We received roughly $150,000 since the year end. And you're thinking that probably about another 70 will get paid by the schools, and roughly another 70 is possible to collect.
Right. Yep. Obviously, that's probably one of the most sensitive numbers on your financial statements. Any other questions on receivables? I'll talk a little bit about that when we get to the...
And that's why the communication letter, that estimate, that allowance for disputed claims is an estimate. It's a, you know, best guess, looking at facts and circumstances. And you can't know perfectly, but you do the best you can.
Any other suggestions, maybe? So what they're, what they're talking about is that the way the finances work for charter schools is that when we have students, we then bill the school districts from which the students came. And then the school districts take money and send it to us. And some school districts look at the bill and they pay us the money that we're owed for educating those children. Other school districts dispute what we've said, but the dispute always comes after the fact. And so, so what happens is that we end up educating students and then subsequent to that, a school district can withhold funds if they, if they feel that there is a dispute in those funds. And then our recourse is to go through what's called a state intercept process, where the state then may or may not take, take the money directly from the school district and send it to us. But the school district doesn't actually have to even tell us why that they're not sending the money. They just don't do it. And so some of these intercepts, we know why there's a dispute and we're working on that. Some of these, we have no idea why the school district withheld the money, they just did. And that's why, that's what's going on here in terms of older ones and newer ones and ones that may be receivable and ones that may not be receivable, is there's all these different categories of monies that are involved.
Continuing on, the assets. If you look down, further away down the page, you have deposits. Those represent the amounts that are held in our parental space here at the building. You've also got equipment, leasehold improvements. That's a significant portion of your largest asset that you have. About $417,000 that was invested in mutual agreements and equipment around the school.
Quick question, I have. Who owns them, so to speak?
Right. So that's a good question. You have to look at the leasehold, lease agreement for that specific stuff, whether desks and computers and all the other PPE that goes into that in the school realm knows.
Right. Other ones typically that are attached to the real estate, and that's a technical or legal term, that belongs to the, typically belongs to the landlord. So that's, this is 400,000 is a mix of those, right?
Yeah, and there's a footnote in the financial statements that very set out a little bit more detail, too. Yeah, on page 11 of the larger bound booklet, you can see the total amount that leaseholds. So $349,000 is leasehold improvements, and then $68,000 of that is equipment. And that's net depreciation expense. So this year, for instance, you know, there was $56,000 in depreciation expense. Every year, those assets are being appreciated. Now, $5,000 additions or reinductions in the 19 year. So all in all, your assets for most part are comparable to last year. Around about 32,000, so pretty consistent. Liabilities, you ended the year with about $451,000 liabilities. That's up about $100,000, 31%. Obviously, the largest increase there is in the amounts due to the retirement system. So at year end, June 30th, 19, about $288,608 was due to retirement. That represents a couple of years worth of liabilities. And that's about $72,000 from last year's balance. Some of that's determined right at June 30th, 2019. So you get a bill, I think, about $100,000 of that is for the 19 year and the residual amount of that balance is...
How much for the 19 year?
It was about $98,000. That was for the 2019 year. And then $190,000 was split between the 17 and 18 years. And there's a footnote in the larger bound booklet that talks about TRS and those amounts.
How typical is it to show that kind of liability?
Well, we don't really audit a lot of charter schools. Most of our audits, you know, in the school realm, are school districts and they tend to pay those pretty current, at least normally it's pretty current. That balance is obviously a little bit higher than what we'd like to see. It's our understanding that some of those bills, you know, were waiting to be paid until the intercept proceeds came through. And, you know, we'll talk about this when we get to the footnotes. Tina has worked out a plan with TRS to make payment on those. But it's our understanding it's going to be monthly payments to help push that balance back down. However, if you look over the last five years, you can see that, you know, the balance certainly is up this year, but has been pretty consistently, you know, around $190,000 mark. But like I said, about $100,000 of that was kind of normal because you don't actually pay that liability until after you've included the expenses. So the amount over and above that is really the older balances.
So I'm going to ask, I'm going to say it back to you to make sure I got it right. It's typical to be carrying, because the fiscal year ends in June and you're talking to us in December.
Right.
It's typical to see a retirement system liability of around $100,000.
Yeah.
Talking about our staff.
Exactly. Yep.
So we're 180 above that.
Right. Exactly. Yep. That would be the amount we'd like to see there. And there's a lot of disclosures and conversations about that, both in the comment letter and in the financial statements themselves. We'll talk a little more about that when we get there. We're going to be...
One other question about the retirement. The number is a combination of what the school is required to put into the retirement system for its teaching staff or the members of that group? And then there's an amount that comes from the employees?
Yeah, so there's regular employee...
So this is a combination of two?
Well, so theoretically it is. However, management, Tina for that matter, and Diane historically have always paid in excess of the amount that was due for the employee share to ensure that at least the employee share from their perspective was being paid. So it's management's understanding that the residual balance there would be predominantly comprised of the employer's share.
Although in reality...
Although in reality, right.
TRS, we found out, has been crediting that, like, first in, first out, or you know, when it first comes. So they're not really breaking it out between employer and employee. They're just crediting it to the total.
Like I said, there's lots of disclosures in the back of the report that talk about that. Obviously, people like to see that number, you know, far as a question mark is. Crew liabilities, about $148,000 at the end of the year. About 114 of that was payroll accrual. Another $34,000 represents compensated absence. So those are employee-related liabilities for accrued time that they earned by having taken advantage of, at June 30th, 2019. And your accounts payroll balance is pretty consistent, five years. It's just, that's just the normal kind of bills. Looking at the bottom in that asset section.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm stopping. Crew liabilities, so we owe employees $140,000, they have...
So how that works is, is at June 30th, you essentially, the employee that worked right up until June 30th, they earned that time. So at June 30th, you hold on for that. However, the payroll checks aren't going to clear until July, right? Due to timing, because there's a lag between when they earn it and when they pay it.
And then the July payroll.
Right. And then July payroll, technically, because you have 11-month employees, they've already earned that, too. So the school accrues that back because if the school were, let's say, worst case, if they closed down July 1st, they would technically have to pay employees out those amounts. And that's no different than the school district during another primary audit, generally except if accounting principles require you accrue those liabilities if you earn them.
And those liabilities are current.
Yep.
This demonstrates, this is a snapshot as of June 30th.
Exactly what it is. Yep. That's a statement of net position. So every time stop on June 30th, and we had to count up where you were, this is kind of the net position.
So the important thing is those are the liabilities are all current for this current fiscal year that we're auditing.
And all those ones have been paid to the employees, you know, the payroll accrual. Those are the normal payroll checks. And then compensated absence, that's, you know, that's for all your accrued time that you earned but haven't used, you know, PTO time, so it's... And that balances off a little bit from last year, were pretty consistent. And the payroll accrual is up a little bit, too, which is consistent.
And that has to do with timing sometimes.
And how you sell payrolls and... Yeah. Rates and time used, et cetera. So if you didn't use time during the year, your compensated absence liability would be higher for an employee who didn't use any time.
Right.
That's why that number could be a lot.
Yep. So then, when we, all of your assets, and we take all the liabilities down below, that gets us your, your net assets. So we do separate out the amount that's invested in equipment, mutual improvements. That's $416,000. You'll notice that nears the asset balance up above. There's also a board reserve amount for the creation of a new reserve, which is explained in footnote 10, $25,000. And then the residual amount is your undesigned net assets, which you'll notice is $5,800 bucks, which is pretty reduced from last year. And that's in large part due, you know, as there was mentioned before, you incurred expenses to educate these students, you know, in the LEAP program. So you've paid all the employees to do that, you've paid for all the supplies to do that, but you haven't yet received the revenue for it, I think.
Well, and we won't.
Right.
Well...
Because of the LEAP student. Right. So we've taken that out of your revenue. And when we do that, we got expenses with no revenue matched. And if you want to rose away in that position, I'll talk more about that on the next page. At the end of the day, your total net assets were about almost $462,000, which is about a $140,000 drop from last year. We'll talk more about that on the next page. Any questions on page two? All right, page three, so this is a five-year comparison of the statement of activities, so 2019 all the way back to 2015. We have all the total revenue lines on the top. We also have the expenses on the bottom. So if you look, about half of it on the page, your total revenue and other support. You recorded about $2.3 million in revenue this year, which is an increase of about 44,000 or 2% from last year. Look at the individual lines that make up that balance. You'll notice the biggest increase was a state grant, $37,502 that was received this year specifically for charter schools. So that obviously helped out in increasing your revenue from the prior year. You can also notice up at the top that you had residual student enrollment. So these are all the charges that you bill out to the district, about almost $2 million. And then we also back out the allowance for disputed claims of about $130,000 this year and almost $80,000 last year. And that's related to normalize your revenue based on management's estimate of what they feel would be collecting.
So are you saying then that we lost the $79,000 last year because you didn't mow that over 2019?
So are you saying then that we lost the seventy-nine thousand last year because you didn't load that over to two thousand nineteen?
Uh, no, you didn't lose. I mean, it's still grossed up in your AR balance. We just took it out of the revenue because there was questions as to whether or not it would be collected. So.
It's important that we do that estimate of what we think it may not collect.
Okay, so that, but that's what I mean, that that seventy-nine thousand isn't add, isn't reflected in the one twenty-nine. It's, it's a separate year. So if another, it's a second year that we haven't collected it, then it's unlikely we will collect it. Therefore, it's a loss, no?
Well, technically, yes, because when we're looking at this operating statement, the one point eight million, that's their one point eight eight oh. That already includes that seventy-nine thousand because you reported it as revenue. But then we back it out there and say, well, we reported revenue, but certainly we're gonna take it out because there is questions as to whether or not we receive it. If you take that seventy-nine thousand and the one twenty-nine thousand and add those two together, and then down at the bottom too, these are amounts for disputed claims for older years, these three amounts, eight, three, nine, nine, four, and forty-nine thousand, and ninety-seven. So if you add all five of those numbers, that would tie out to your total between the gross amount receivables and what we're actually showing on the statement of net position at June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Oh, the last couple, I'm sorry.
Right here.
Right down here is five, allowance for disputed claims. So the three numbers, there's eight, three, nine, nine, four, forty-nine, three, forty-seven, and ninety-seven, oh, sixty-five. So this page gives you a little more detail about the historical balances that make up that, the larger balance.
In other documents that I've seen, there's reference to claims as far back as oh-nine, ten. And, to remind, I can answer my own question, you're not including that, sure, it's never mind.
Okay.
Sorry.
And some of these amounts down at the bottom prove to you amounts that go back that far. That's why we didn't put them against specific revenue year up in the final page. And there's detailed spreadsheets that Tina has behind all of these numbers. On the expense side, you end of the year with two point three million dollars in expenses, which is up about three percent from last year's balance, two point two four. Um, looking at your expenses, you know, going line by line, it's very consistent with last year, which shows management did a good job of kind of holding down the expense side of the statement of activities. The increases that we see are in salaries. So there was a forty-two, forty-two thousand dollar increase in overall salaries, almost one point four million. Uh, and your benefits, that was up about thirty thousand. A lot of that's due to an increase in the TRS rates from nine point eight percent last year, ten point six. Now, it's the largest base your salaries feature. That's a continued fact in the expense line. And once again, just on hand report.
Just, just a really quick question, looking back through others. What's the difference between fundraising income and contribution?
So fundraising income would be ones that we actually held fundraisers for, we're not sourced.
Spaghetti dinner, things of that nature.
Contributions would be just.
Generally, considering.
Sure.
Okay.
So down at the bottom, you can see that, you know, once we take your revenue, we back out the expenses. It was a reduction of about sixty thousand, or not a loss of sixty thousand, additional eighty-four thousand dollars. Think about what losses were along with more disputed claims. So combined is about a hundred and forty thousand dollar reduction in your net assets, which ties to the page before that. Now, if we didn't have any disputed claims, if we didn't have a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, or the eighty-three thousand down below, you actually would have had net income of about seventy-three thousand. So if you would have been able to collect on those amounts, then you wouldn't have had the loss for those. There would have been a positive here.
Why do you have net assets of July first and then net assets of June thirtieth? It does, it's only a day difference.
It's a year difference.
Oh.
So this is the beginning balance. So that was July first, twenty eighteen, and this is June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. When you issue these, the finals, they will have dates, the years in there on those lines?
Uh, no, no, we don't, yeah, because it was comparative statement for all five years, yeah.
That's right, okay.
So the July first would be of that twenty nineteen.
Well, I just was remembering when you said that as of June thirtieth, you have accumulated accrued liabilities. But then in July, you have additional liabilities for people who are eleven months. So that's why I thought it was a big difference.
Uh, yep, but yeah, it's a fiscal year, definitely, so, yep. Any questions on that page? Page four, uh, this is a five-year comparison under statement of cash flows. This is once again extracted right from the primary financial statements. Um, so if you were to look at that, you'd see these numbers in there. If you look, you'll notice kind of down at the bottom, the last line, you have a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. That's what you actually have in cash at year end. So that would tie back to the first schedule we looked at. Uh, last year, being the twenty eighteen, June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, you would have had a hundred eighty-two thousand. So you, through all of your operations, you consumed about fourteen thousand dollars of cash in twenty nineteen. That, once again, you know, if you go back to disputed claims, if you would have actually collected on those receivables, then it would have had a positive because you would have transferred the receivable assets into a cash balance. So that, you know, fourteen thousand dollar negative could have been, you know, how much ever you collected as a positive, increasing your overall cash balance. But this is a, this is a really kind of consolidated document looking at cash flows. And management, Tina in particular, need to work together to put together a more specific cash flow by month that they use, you know, operationally. Um, this is just kind of consolidation of that looking at you right here. Very important document in the last. All right, so that's it for this cover. We're showing on there. I wanted to hop into the financial statements and just kind of go over a couple of million points in there. So there is a larger balance aspect. These are your actual financial statements. This is where we get the management to get back to the summary out of. So start opening through that. Uh, first couple of pages are the independent audit reports, as Lesley already talked about. You can read through that. Um, it talks about our opinion, the emphasis managers, audit responsibility, management's responsibility, and government auditing standards. We have a piece in there on that. Page three, um, four, five, and six, and seven are the primary financial statements. Page three, if you look at that, you'll see the account receivable number. Presented in that here, we also disclose the amount for disputed claims. You'll see the dollar amount with a reference to the note that describes those balances there. So as we talked about, there's a four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar allowance currently for disputed claims.
Sorry, where are we?
Page three is the larger bound booklet, right at the top section there.
Okay.
There's more detail on these in the financial statements.
When it says C, note three.
Yep. So after the primary financial statements, starting on page eight, or note six of the financial statements. So note one talks about all your accounting policies, the ones that are seen in the financial statement users. Uh, note two talks about concentration of credit risk. Note three talks about the allowance for disputed claims and kind of the psychology behind that. Note four is fixed assets.
Eight.
Eleven.
Yeah. So I've risen through it.
So there's note three.
Yeah.
It's note three.
Note three and four on page eleven?
Yep, note three, yep.
Ten.
Uh, page eleven is note three and note four. Yep, so note three's allowance for disputed claims. It talks about the intercepts. Note four is fixed assets. Going to page twelve, note five, required disclosure of future lease commitments. So in note five, we talk about that. There's a schedule that exposes all the future payments. Note six is line of credit. Note seven is related pardons. Note nine is your net assets with donor restrictions, page fourteen. Then also on page.
Page thirteen, financial system.
Thirteen is.
I missed that.
Yep, pension systems, sorry, yeah.
And in here, we talk about, what's the paragraph it is?
Yeah.
Yes. Page thirteen, so the third paragraph. Um, and going into the next paragraph, we talk about the accounts that are which is not a card that was mentioned.
Yep, it's, I haven't read this until just now. I'm just skimming it. Um, we're, the mechanics of this are that the school simply withholds from the salary of the employee their contribution. And then it's to forward it on to essentially a trust.
Yep, so depending on the tier of the employee, there's a certain amount that's in the house.
Right, that's sort of the detail of that. The employees don't literally write a check.
No, it's taken out through the payroll servicing provider, then the school.
Then the, the school is the trustee for those monies. And it's to convey them on.
Right. And as you can see, there's a schedule down there on page thirteen of employee portion of the TRS liability. Page fourteen talks about net assets with donor restrictions. So there are some contributions that were received that had donor restrictions with them. The balance were largely the same as last year. But as those specific purposes come available, those bond are spent towards that.
No, back to the pension system for a second. The, um, if the money isn't received as expected by the retirement system, are there penalties or interest that's charged?
There is interest, and that's, yeah, in here.
Roughly what rate?
Uh, it's point four or five percent to point two, three, three percent. It varies by the year, and that's outstanding. There's an annual statement that Tina gets that exposes interest.
And is there a penalty on top of that?
Not to my knowledge, no. And Tina's had conversations with TRS related to those balances. And it's our understanding a lot of the payments that are being made going forward to sort of chip away at that balance.
So this stuff makes me feel so freaking stupid. So when you say monthly payments to begin chipping away at that balance, that's assuming that the, that the payments that should be normally made are being made. So when you're talking about the monthly payments that chip away at the balance, you're talking about monthly payments over and above what normally would be paid into TRS.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
I just want to make sure I understood that.
Yeah, and then you just look at that schedule. The employer portion this year was about sixty-seven thousand. Um, so that would be, that's determined when you get the letter after June thirtieth, whether the payments that are made towards that balance. And then our understanding would be additional payments made towards the old balance to make that.
And as we mentioned, if you do get money from the intercepts, that money will go directly to the TRS.
Yeah, but that's the type of reviews that law will be.
Exactly.
Right, because schools aren't paying us, even though the law says they should be paying us.
Um, it's page fourteen, notes nine and note ten, uh, the dissolution reserve that was established this year. It's part of the charter that was passed a couple of years ago. In the charter, they just want schools, and what I researched, pretty common among the schools, there's money inside for that. And if that, that were to happen, you would have funds out before.
So where to, I'm just again reading, establish a dissolution reserve account of no less than seventy-five thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
Over what period of time?
Three years.
Three years. So twenty-five thousand was put into the twenty nineteen year. There's already been twenty-five thousand funded to the twenty-twenty year. And then presumably a residual payment of twenty-five thousand.
And you were a little behind in establishing that. So we do have, we can go to the comment letter. There is a comment about that that we'll talk about a little bit more.
Okay.
But after year end, another twenty-five thousand is also put in there. So at this point in time, there's fifty thousand dollars.
So there is.
The subsequent to June thirtieth, another twenty-five was put in to a separate account. So there's fifty thousand dollars.
So if you jumped ahead to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty, and you were to take your snapshot, and the dissolution fund required by the state would be fifty thousand, which would be on time for sequence.
Well, another twenty, another twenty-five thousand should be done at year end this year.
Oh, okay.
And that will give you up to the seventy-five.
So on July first, twenty-twenty, you will be at seventy-five.
Right.
At the end, yes.
Page fifteen, available liquidity. So this is a new footnote from audits for this part of ASU twenty sixteen dash fourteen, new accounting announcement that just came out, as Lesley had mentioned there. So one of the requirements of that was to disclose, or enhance disclosures related to available liquidity. So we put this in all of our nonprofits at the top of that standard. So this, uh, these numbers are extracted right from the actual financial statements. You'll see your cash balance.
And they're, they're looking at just assets that are currently available, like within the next year. So things like fixed assets, prepaid expenses, they're not considered like liquid assets. You can't take what you already spent on prepaid assets and pay for liabilities with them. That's the idea behind this footnote.
Yep, and due to kind of the technical language behind that, there's an exclusion for the retirements that's not in here. So you'll see, actually, looking at the chart up above, you still have four hundred thousand dollars to go with general expenditures. It's kind of a misnomer because, you know, you know, the financial statements of the TRS slide are actually taken into account. So where that's actually taken into account is in the large paragraph below where it talks about that.
And this is according to standards. According to standards, you're not supposed to show the current liabilities, which doesn't make a lot of sense to us, but that's, after a lot of research, that's what we determine. So that's why you don't see the liabilities that are associated with those current assets.
All right, and then page sixteen, note twelve, reclassification. So in the preparing financial statements, quite frequently, we'll have reclassifications where we take last year's numbers and change them. This year's, um, we took the, we grossed up the revenue and the expenses and moved up the allowance for disputed claims on the primary financial statements for the eighteen year, which we presented preparedly. Doesn't change in that position last year, but we'll put this footnote in there just to be transparent.
I was gonna say, let's clarify, you're actually changing the classification. So if it was materials versus repairs and maintenance, you might move it from one line to the other to be comparable. The numbers from last year aren't changed.
Right.
In total.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
And like Ben said, the biggest change was that we broke out the current part of the dispute claims from the law.
And then, um, note thirteen, so that starts on page sixteen to page seventeen, so evaluation of going concern. This is probably one of the more important footnote in the year. You're kind of well aware. You know, in accounting, we talk of going concerns being a normal thing where business continues in perpetuity. Um, there are certain things that we have to evaluate when we make that determination. And management really makes that determination. Um, so really, just due to the not being able to collect on those receivable balances and kind of that current decline in enrollment through the freshman class and, you know, probationary status that SUNY's put you on, there are more uncertainties issued than there have been in prior years. And given the low amount of net assets, unassigned assets at five thousand that we talked about, you know, management, when we all kind of gather, we call this appropriate to include a going concern. It talks, and adds a little bit more transparency and disclosures related to those uncertainties and concerns. So if you read through it, it talks a little bit about some of the, you know, some of the receivable balances and intercept process, also some of the, uh, the points of the resolution on probationary status that SUNY passed. But then it also sheds light on management's plans to alleviate those concerns. So it's kind of, it's a really comprehensive footnote. And, you know, it kind of sheds light into what you're kind of facing in this next year of operations. Um, the uncertainties associated with that, and management's plan to tackle those uncertainties. If you haven't run through that footnote, I would encourage you to do so. That's kind of the main point. And that is also emphasis on managers. So as Lesley talked about, when a person refers to financial statements, they look at our opinion. This will refer down to that footnote. And then, uh, finally, at the end, we've got the independent audit report on internal control and financial reporting. So this is because you conform to government auditing standards, the yellow book, so to speak. We also include this report in there, as Lesley talked about, there is a finding, twenty nineteen dash oh one, related to bookkeeping. Um, this year, uh, we, you know, we did a lot of audit adjustments as part of the actual audit. Sort of a fair amount back and forth in getting the numbers to where they needed to be. That's not really that uncommon in a lot of organizations we audit. Quite often, you know, there can be a fair amount of bookkeeping. Um, but we thought it was, you know, as word of need, be more important in the schedule. And just before I turn it over to Lesley, to talk to you a little bit about the audit process, you know. So this audit is a pretty long process. We would start the audit in September. Um, you know, there was a lot of, this year, there was a lot of discussions on back and forth. We normally perform inquiries of both management and employees. We obviously do all versus standard male that book casting. We do walk through the primary cycles, which is your cash disbursements, all the checks as well, cash receipts, the payments that come in, plus all of your payroll cycles. So we took representative samples of that to understand whether or not the board proof policies are in place and being followed, all the way down to the transactional amounts that aggregate to the numbers that we've talked about here. We also perform inquiries with attorneys who send out confidential. We also perform inquiries with attorneys, we send out confirmations for receivable balances, and a lot of other general audit procedures that kind of transpired over the last three months. And also this year, there was some conversations with Ralph and Barbara at SUNY, with Tina, and collective conferences we've done, just to kind of work out some of the items that were shown in the report. I think it was a pretty successful audit, but I'll turn it over to Leslie to talk a little bit about the kind of...
Right, so the reason why it is later than the November first deadline is because we set a lot of time with the receivables and tried to nail that down. And also, we were hoping that maybe we have some information on the intercept process. Unfortunately, you know, we didn't have that in there. So via conversations, as Ben mentioned, with Tina and Ralph and Barbara, looking at what's been submitted for the intercepts, that's quite a process that we wanted to go through and felt that it was important to go through. So then we had the most accurate numbers that we could, again, still an estimate, but we did work very diligently with Tina and the...
So, so you, you were actually working with the Charter School Institute primarily on that?
They came for a meeting, and because there's so much uncertainty with the intercept process, we wanted to understand as much as we could about it and get their opinion about what we might expect. And so it's conversation with them of, you know, what is likely, so we really looked at that very carefully.
So am I right in thinking that everything except for that piece, which is a significant piece of the audit, was completed by November first?
Yes.
And so all you were doing was trying to find out more about that process, and you're trying to find out more about it from the Charter School Institute, which in turn took all this time to try to, for you to try to extract the information. And then the Charter School Institute turned around and cited the late submission of the audit as one of the factors in putting a some probation for fiscal mismanagement. That's one way of looking at it.
That's one way of looking at it.
You know, I understand.
We obviously wanted to wait as long as possible throughout the intercepts because that has a really material effect on the financial statements, so, you know. There is a lot of uncertainty with those, so that was definitely a large consideration.
And to be honest, in our, in our meeting with Ralph and Barbara, they were more concerned than having, betting themselves, and more concerned than having as accurate as possible. Which they communicated to us.
But then they turned around without even informing us of bringing this resolution for fiscal mismanagement to the trustees. Yeah, really good faith.
I really appreciate the process that you went through to, to really push the envelope around questions with the intercept process because I've learned a lot in the process that I think enhanced our ability, facilitated our ability to act on the intercepts and receivables. So really thank you because I think you shook some things loose that otherwise, you know, we might not have, might not have come to, you know, Indian all day.
Okay, good. I hope, I hope that you...
Good. But it seems to me that your work begs the question of how much time, energy we should be devoting to collecting these monies. Given your third-party opinion that X amount is collectible and that, in essence, hundreds of thousands of dollars isn't. So in, in thinking through a strategy on pursuing these, I think we need to think about the practical, well, the theoretical practicalities of how much we're actually likely to collect. And given the limited resources we have to pursue them, how much of those limited resources we should really devote to that endeavor?
That's really a question for management. It's really management's estimate as to what that number should be. And we did work with Tina in establishing that, and we feel that's probably a pretty conservative estimate. But at the end of the day, given the historical collection rates, if management comes up with that, you know, we are a timing up for other states.
And that, and that collection of your receivables is probably the most important factor for you.
Well, it's important, but it's all, but with limited resources, you know, we do so much. And if there, there's a pot like this, and the chances of collecting the pot are diminished, and there's various things that we've had shared with us about, one that you mentioned, which is the obvious one, probably the intuitive one, you're looking at oh, nine, ten, eleven, and they're asking for more documentation. The chances of finding that documentation to the level that's going to satisfy the intercept folks, NICEF, is pretty slim. Gets better the more, the closer in time that we see what it's are.
The largest part of that balance is really in the last couple of years. So it's sort of, I think, a hundred and forty in nineteen and like a hundred and forty or somewhere there in eighteen. So most of that larger balance, if they're stuck from oh nine, it's very, you know, in school in relation to the more current stuff.
Yeah, but and what that also suggests, though, is that this is a problem that's not going to go away. In fact, it's getting worse. If, if the, the more current years are the years where the bigger balances are, it suggests that there's more and more resistance to paying these bills. And, and that resistance is not going to go away.
Well, in the last couple of years, though, you have the program, so...
No, I understand that.
So even the current ones, okay.
Now, it's just a huge catastrophe.
Just in the nineteen, the fiscal year, some of those were, we've stated, you know, that under your understanding of, you know, that they were supposed to be allowed to stay in the program once they were admitted in the prior year.
Yeah, I'm just, I, you know, I just have a real concern about the ongoing issue of the problem. It's, it's not a problem that ended June first, two thousand nineteen. Right, June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, it's, it's...
Right, it is, yes, and we actually have a comment about that.
And it's their most effective way of making sure it didn't go away.
Well, the operating budget that was developed, that doesn't include receipt of any of those intercept balances. So the thought would be that you would continue operating if you weren't going to collect those balances. And then figure out a way essentially to operate without those, which you have been operating without and thus far.
Well, I have to say, I'm sorry to say this, but operating but not meeting all of our liabilities.
Right, exactly. So those are the two biggest concerns.
Which basically did you... All right, so what leads us, would you like me to go through the communication letter in more detail? I've pretty much covered the highlights of that.
Uh, I have to do a time check. Apparently, there's several board members who need to leave by two fifteen, which means that we have to have a vote to accept this before the board members leave.
Then I would suggest not going to the communication letter. The only thing we didn't look at in depth are the, the audit adjustments that are in the back of this letter. So if you want to look at that separately. And then the comment letter. So we did have a comment last year that got resolved, and that had to do with unauthorized disbursements and the payroll. We didn't see anything like that this year when we looked. And we did do some extra procedures just because of the experience we had last year. So we didn't see anything like that. So that we're considering resolved. The bookkeeping, we pretty much already talked about, I'm sorry, I'm in the match with comment letter. And that, that looks like a comment letter on the top.
Sorry, I'm going back and forth between it, it was emailed to us and what's now...
Okay.
So I'll go to this.
It's not in there, it's stapled in this pile.
Here, why don't I do this one?
I want my piles, folks, I don't want everybody else's pile, I just need to know where in the pile I'm supposed to be looking.
It should be in the packet that we handed out, I think. Which consisted of the bound book and the ladders.
Your two letters, that was the communication.
One is the communication, one is the comment letter. Yes, okay, all right. So the first page had to do with that comment that got resolved that I just spoke about. So on the second page, we have the bookkeeping comment that Ben had mentioned earlier. And this has to do with year-end audit adjustments. We had to come in, we had to do a lot of adjustments to get the balance sheet accounts in line with what they should be at the end of the year. We had the same sort of comment last year, and we really didn't see much of an improvement in that piece year-end. I should say, based on what we've seen anyway, with the change in bookkeepers, finance director, that things seemed a lot more organized. We did have, as we talked about, some supporting documentation issues, but they seem to be at the beginning of the year rather than at the end of the year, when the person, you know, when the old person was still there. So that was a positive thing that was communicated. What we still had to do with these material adjustments in year-end, hence this comment on bookkeeping.
So to the extent you allow the voice of opinion, does the change in personnel seem to resolve the issue? Or are there more things that we, the trustees, need to expect of our staff?
I think the change in personnel has helped your day-to-day accounting, and then the use of this new charter consultant and improve the financial reporting process will probably close the gap.
Board reporting was an issue we had last year. It appeared that, that board reporting was enhanced during the year, so we considered that resolved. As I mentioned, the supporting documentation, we still had similar comments about looking at the documentation supporting the receipts and disbursements. However, as I said, that seemed to be more in the beginning of the year when you had the prior bookkeeper.
Let me go back to the board reporting. What did you perceive change?
In the prior year, it seemed that, that the treasurer was reviewing things. So it didn't seem like the, the whole board was reviewing financial information in all four years.
I see, and what documentation or representations did you get that changed your mind?
We were...
We, I think you actually...
Yes, we were due to the minutes. I thought there was periodic reporting in the treasurer every month of the year. Is that not your understanding?
Well, I'm interested in what you thought was the other.
Well, one of the things that we do, that we gauge that is we send, at the beginning of our audit, send board inquiries. And one of the questions in that is, are you satisfied with the financial reports that you are providing throughout the year? And are you getting any concerns this year in relation to that question? That item of the minutes, uh, seems to always resolve, but...
And based on the conversations, so...
Right, and our conversations have changed. Well, typically, a lot of that changed in our inquiries, because there was no concern voiced with that email that we sent out.
Okay, slid back to the patient and discuss. Some sale data checks, just that need to be cleaned up, and that's something that we reported a couple of years now. And journal entries for...
This seems, this seems like a relatively minor issue. But how do you, oh, I see, it tells us how to clean it up. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I kind of want to, because I know you're running it all the time.
No, I understand.
And then journal entry supporting documentation. We like to see, you know, if we pull the journal entry, we want to see the support behind it, just to see the purpose of it and that it was reviewed and that sort of thing, so we'd like to see that documentation in the next. Leslie, could you explain?
I would agree.
Oh, okay, so, something else, so for instance, a payroll accrual, something that's outside of the normal, you know, you pay a bill and it gets reported automatically in the books. So if you have to accrue something, or you have to find a mistake, and you need to change, change an amount reported, then you do that through a journal entry and actually, you know, changes the accounting. So anytime you have a change like that, we like to see that there is support for that change. Why is that change being made? And why, you know, what's the support for this accrual that you're doing?
Well, there's not a lot of journal entries that are gone throughout the year, generally just that year-end for our different sites.
Or if you find a mistake or something like that. Accounts receivable, here we're talking about just that whole process that we've been discussing as far as staying up with the districts when they're not paying, you know, quickly, timely responding or inquiring of them and just following up and staying on top of, of the billing process. There's some credits that were building up for some districts, you know, they had overpaid. And these overpaid balances were not being applied routinely to the current bill. So just to clean that all up and to keep on top of the billing and try to increase communication, enhance communication with the districts that you can resolve issues in a timely manner, and things don't keep building up.
Now, arguably, that's something that's been going on for, you know, like the school. Have you raised it before?
We've talked about receivables at meetings in prior years, yeah, it's been going on.
We did put it in a formal comment like this, and some of it was because we see these, these credit balances building up and not really being applied to the current bill.
It's really been recent years, kind of starting with the D I M, and it's really kind of required a little bit more work to get it straightened out. It has been a verbal comment prior year, too.
This next one we discussed about was the dissolution reserve funding. You know, that's probably, it should have been done last year, really, and so it's a comment to that effect. We didn't put it into the bound reports, we didn't feel that it was about level, and you are dealing with it now and retracting it, which is really important. And then the discussion item has to do with the financial condition, and that we've been talking about. So in January, we just had a comment that pretty much takes the footnote information that we've discussed in there and put it into a comment here. And it also talks about, you know, the fact that probation has certain terms in it, you know, calls for things they think that the TRS, et cetera. And then management's response is pretty much what they're planning to do to address the situation. And that is looking at the budget cycle and the cash flow cycle, and really looking at, taking a very careful, conservative look at what they expect to get in and expect to pay out for, you know, this next, the rest of this full year. And also the intercept process, and continuing with that, looking at fundraising possibilities. The fundraising, however, is not reflected in that cash flow analysis to be conservative. So whatever additional money you can raise through that will be just that much, you know, more benefit to you. And then I won't go into it for attack time, but there are some upcoming accounting announcements that, that will affect the school that you need to consider.
Any different reporting requirements?
Things like leases, a different way to account for leases, that's coming, that's in the action several years from now. Now they keep pushing that one back. You know, there's some revenue recognition standards and that sort of thing. So any question, any other questions for us? Want to thank Tina and Gabby and Carlos and all the staff for helping us during the audit. And we appreciate that, all the time and effort that went into it on your part. And we acknowledge that as well. Thank you very much.
We have a fabulous team, and we really enjoy working with you. And it just makes me feel so much better to really, to work with you on understanding the school's financial position so that we can take strong protective action to make sure that we continue on as a level concerning... Words, you know.
On that note, I would like to make a motion, thank you, that we accept the financial statements as presented in the documents we... that we accept the financial statements presented in the documents we've just reviewed.
Leslie.
Any just more discussion before I call a vote?
Yeah, I want to just thank you for your diligence and laying things out. And particularly your pursuit of the mechanics of the intercept process and giving us probably a more realistic sense of what's collectible and what's not, and what, how that's going to affect us.
And you can call Ben or I, anytime that you have any questions. And please say feel free.
All those in favor of accepting the audit? Joe, that's unanimous?
No, it's not. I don't. I felt compelled to abstain. Because, as I said, I got most of this, I saw it in my email this morning. And spent the morning looking at it. I don't fully understand all of it. And I have questions I feel I need to pursue. And so I'm going to abstain.
Okay. So one, two, three, so it's five, yes, one abstaining, zero, no. Now, I know there's some people who are way past having to leave.
I can stick around ten minutes, but that's about it.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next order of business is public comment. Okay, public comment will be two minutes per person. Brian Manchester.
Hi, just started here. I'm Brian Manchester. Showed that I had questions and concerns about probation period here and down here. And looking forward to hearing what the plan is to get out of that issue, looking on the next school year. I know you didn't really discuss that today. The audit looked good and thorough, fortunately. Not being able to compare the actual numbers with past years, I can't say, except that I know where probation is over. So I'm kind of concerned about that. I was looking forward to seeing you as the parent action committee.
I'll be there.
Here, hopefully you have a plan that you can share and relieve some concerns.
Yes. Yes, like I said, I'll be meeting with the staff. Peter and I will be meeting with the staff on Monday. I'll be meeting with the parents on Thursday. And then we'll have a full roundtable community board meeting on the twenty first.
And Brian, in the meantime, if you'd like to reach out to me with questions, I'm happy to share what we got.
Frank.
Yeah, my name is Frank, the radio. I'm a finance guy and used to do what those folks did until I left the profession and went off to work for companies. And for me, looking at this, their original budget was forecasted roughly $2.4 million at 150 students. And that number, the norm has been downgraded from 150 to 107. That results in roughly $640,000 decrease in revenue. So if I were thinking about sending a child to the school, I would be seriously concerned about that. The auditor has also made a note about, there's a going concern footnote, which as an auditor, when you see that in a financial report, it means pay attention. Means really pay very close attention. And basically, what I see going on here is, potentially, this school's going to run out of cash. They started the year with about $150,000 in cash. They were forecasting about a $50,000 surplus. And if you back $600,000 out of that, it's pretty obvious that things can go south. I don't know, I don't have access to their numbers, but looking at it from a distance, it just doesn't look good for me. And then they have liabilities that they haven't paid years past. That has to be paid with cash. And their receivables have been questioned primarily because they were billing for things that they weren't supposed to bill. So that brings us to math, that brings us to question math and practices as well. And Mr. Wilson said it well. He said that the operations are not meeting the liabilities. So again, if I were sending somebody, a child, to the school, I would have serious reservation consideration for that doing real thorough investigation into those numbers.
I may request that people say where they're speaking from, whether they're a parent or.
I'm just a concerned citizen.
Oh, God, thank you.
Been monitoring it from day one. And I have to schedule, if anybody wants to schedule, I'd say I'd do all the time. Okay, Pat Eric. Pat Eric.
Hi, I'm Pat Eric, concerned citizen, former teacher with Amy. Okay. And I have some very serious questions and comments to make about the ineligible funding that you're now trying to collect from school districts. Beginning in two thousand seventeen eighteen, when you started the LEAK program without authorization by your chartering agency, you were intaking students that were out of the parameters of your charter. In January and February of two thousand eighteen, there was an exchange of emails and documents between Kate Reed, ICSD council, and Ralph Rossi, CSI council. In those emails, Rossi said, two new groups, they are no longer eligible to take those students, but we're going to let them stay there because they've already gone through six months of school and even though they're too young to be there, whatever. In those emails, in those exchanges, he also said, but we, CSI, are not going to involve ourselves in the intercept process. He said, that is not germane to our mission. That has to be taken up on the state level. And we're not going to help you get those funds. It's up to the state of New York to make a call on that. But you need to stop taking those kids. In two thousand eighteen nineteen, you took those kids again. You claimed those tuitions. And the protests from ICSD, Kate Reed, came in October. It was not answered by Ralph Rossi until March of two thousand nineteen, when he said again to you, don't take those kids, but since it's already March, we're going to leave them here. But we are not going to help you with the intercept process. So these recent funds of two years of $288,000 and $492,000, whatever numbers are thrown out, I'm sorry, you're all confused.
That's two minutes.
That's the problem. You're not eligible for that.
Alright, so, traditional plan was to go into an executive session.
Can I say something really quick? I need to sign the paper.
Go ahead. And since I've allowed you to, since I've allowed you to sign the paper, then anybody else who wants to sign up, can they have an opportunity to sign the paper?
How sorry, Karen Dollander. I'm, or Karen Dollander. My daughter is a sophomore here. And she was also in the first aid program, which, I guess I'm confused. But I do have to say that it was really remarkable for her, coming from home schooling. It was this amazing opportunity to gently guide a lot of the kids. Well, there was a handful of places that were home schools and it was a first aid program. But it was this gentle approach to public school, I mean, I call this public school. The two teachers were absolutely amazing. Allowed the kids to be blown wide open with information that they hadn't had before. They had experiences they hadn't had before. And it really, really, really prepared those kids for ninth grade. I guess I wasn't aware as a parent that it wasn't approved by the SUNY chapter. Is that what, is that the influence? So I guess I'm confused and maybe other LEAK parents are confused too. How, how did that happen? I guess I'm confused, yes, that's all I can say, I keep saying it.
So, I mean, at this point, all I can say is that it's, we dispute the narrative that has been laid out by some, that we just accepted students that we're not allowed to accept. And so because there's legal issues involved, I can't really say anything more than that. There, you know, there, we can talk a bit more probably in writing about like a timeline. But, but I will just say that we don't accept that narrative.
And in SUNY's letter too, they found that the school had not acted in bad faith. The program is described in our charter, in our, in our current charter. And SUNY found that we didn't act in bad faith in entering students. So they were disputed after the fact. And not, and that was not resolved, raised or resolved until the spring, you know, close to the end of the school year. So, and I can share more information if you'd like.
Jasmine Manchester.
Um, Jasmine.
Jasmine.
Okay, so what I'd like to say is both sides should consider more in their arguments the fact that this is not just an issue about numbers on a page or just finances, even though that's a large part of it. You also need to consider, these are like real people that you're impacting, the students and the teachers. Like, our lives are going to have far greater consequences to this, especially to students, just from being at a school in the state. So you need to like just consider that more rather than just like, what makes financial sense? Also, like what's not going to like hurt students? Because like last year was one of my favorite years of schooling. I was in public school up to seventh grade. And then I was home schooled for two years. And then I started in the roots last year. And I loved like the programs, I loved how everything was working. But this year has been like, I wouldn't call it the worst, but it's definitely been like a far like drop from the quality of last year. Just from the amount of turmoil that's going on behind the scenes that we either don't know about or have to like consider while we're also working on our regular school stuff. And it's just not a good state for like students to be in. So I just hope that you consider that more when making your decisions. Like, yeah, I didn't have anything to find, so I'm sorry.
Again, you know, people from the audience can stand up and say they're going to run out of money. But, you know, we're not. Now, we, as again, we will present to everybody the financial plan for this year. As of now, there's no indication that we're not going to be able to continue just business as usual for this particular year. And so, you know, there's lots of, definitely lots of angst and social media, lots of what about this, what about that? People can say this, that. But as of right now, we're not looking at any reason why we're not going to make it through this year. So at least for the people who are involved in the school, the teachers, students, that's not what we're talking about right now. We're talking about how to be strong into the future. We're not talking about right now. So with that. Well, do you want to sign up?
We just have a quick question. I have more to do on the past, I still have my.
Yep.
In previous board meetings.
Could I say?
I'm Diana Desalay-Hines. I'm a parent of a past student. And I actually just have a question because I've been to a few meetings and I've listened to the public comment period. And in the past, the board has always said, we're the board, we have to decide things in groups before we make a statement and we can't answer any of your questions. And yet today, I'm hearing a lot of the questions being answered. And so I'm curious, what makes, what is different about today's questions versus past questions?
Well, the board speaks with votes. And so any statement that a board member makes is either just a clarification of fact or an opinion by that particular board member. That's not changed from this board meeting versus any other board meeting. Alright, so at this point, my question for the board is, given the fact that the number of people left and the time, would you like to adjourn this meeting or would you like to? We do have enough people to go into executive session if we want to, but we've lost three.
We actually have a quorum.
Four is a. Four is a quorum. Yep.
I think we ought to do what we can moving forward. To me, there's quite a few questions raised, but if you.
Kate has to leave in five minutes.
Yeah, I'm over your pass.
Okay. In that case.
Then I think we need to be meeting again. We've got, in my mind, we've got questions that need to be answered. And they're not, they need to be answered quickly and copiously. And everybody needs to be here among the board members to hear those answers and the discussion of the problems.
Yes, I mean, I agree. That's why I think even without Kate, with the people gone, there's too many people not here. So the next scheduled board meeting is on January twenty first. If we are able to, we may call an emergency meeting between now and then. That just depends on, on schedules and these sorts of things. If we do call an emergency meeting, we'll post it as soon as a date exists. But as of right now, there's no date, so there's nothing to post. Okay? I move that we adjourn this meeting. It's adjourned. We started at ten after one.